No, okay. Alright, let's start the meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Four members present tonight, and that makes a quorum. We have two items on the agenda. The first one is to review the draft resolution about fourteen constitution drive. This was the decision that the board had at the last meeting, or the last meeting. And so I've done a draft that reflects what I believe was the board's reasoning. So let's take a little time to look at it.
Looking at this for a second, I thank you Eric, this is what I remembered.
Really, you put it so well.
As if I was here.
Good as being there. Yeah, so he can't, is not eligible to vote on approving this, this resolution.
So, you know, while the referral, right, and we mentioned it, and the fact that you also mentioned front yard side backs, uh, front yard setbacks. You make mention of the fact that we found that it really wasn't an issue.
Right, exactly, we modified the specification of the variances required.
Yeah. Well, I think from what I remember, this is exactly what we spoke about in this findings, and we sort of went through a synopsis of it right at the end, this too. What we thought before we voted on it, so I see it right here, thank you. And I'll move in favor, uh, you know, that we approve this resolution, um, for the SCARPA fourteen constitution drive. A property, the side yard northwesterly variance as they saw it. With the addition.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright, so let's.
No changes here, I see.
Great.
Yeah. So that's, um, three votes, not sufficient to.
That's sufficient.
To.
So you do a final one that you'll sign.
Right.
Okay.
Right. Next item is to review a new draft of the updated application form. And we looked at a version last time, and board members made some great suggestions, and I summarized, and I incorporated them all in this version. So, um, let's take some time to go through the new version. There's an introductory paragraph now, it starts out now kind of explaining, you know, in the most broad terms, what ZBA is. And for newcomers. And this opening cites another source that they can turn to for more details.
I think it's a great synopsis right up front.
Tried to be sure to get on the the key point that the board is always balancing, everything we do involves, you know, two, two different kinds of interests that have to be reconciled.
It also gives the applicant the complete heads up of how we're going about evaluating their application, so it's great.
And trying to make it clear that ZBA is an appellate body, so it's, we're hearing grievances, someone's got to have a grievance, they come to us for to get it heard, and that's like the escape valve function of this ZBA.
Well, that's the roadmap to let the applicant know how they might try to establish, um, the grounds for variance, and, and what kind of environment they're walking into.
Right, exactly.
Which they've never really, you know, most laypeople wouldn't know.
Yeah, you know, what counts as a justification for a variance, what exactly do you need to present to the board? And, okay, so then it cites this New York State pamphlet, which is intended for, for new newcomers, applicants who are not familiar, it just gives very basics groundwork, foundations for understanding the process.
Funny thing is, I looked this up, and when you go look this up, it brings up, you know, other potential publications to give insight into zoning laws and what the function is, so you just by looking this up, you find.
You Google, you Google that?
Yeah, but you find, you come up with other potential sources that you might be looking for.
Yeah, New York State does have the same series, this James A. Coon series, has other titles, some, some of which are more, going to more depth.
Right.
And then, um, the next section is the step-by-step process, and it's, this is basically what you saw before, except I, I worked in what, at the beginning here, what John had suggested of clarifying that the steps are chronological, and that, um, if this is, they are dictated by the law, so of state and village. It's not just, um, it's not just something that.
We're inventing.
Yeah, the board did not invent this, the village did not invent it. Founded on requirements of law. Well, some of it, the village. We noticed, we might have noticed some days.
Right, because, and, you know, there's state law, number one, but there's also village law, but mostly village law, the way it's expressed mimics what the state laws and the zoning capacities.
Um, yeah, I didn't make any changes in the numbered steps themselves. Um, then we, we have the checklist of first the payments, um, then the materials, the documents. So I didn't make any changes here until the bottom, where I added a paragraph about photos, the encouraging, encouraging photos.
Yeah.
Submission of photos of this, of the surroundings, the structures, the views. And I suggest here to, that they provide one set, a, a minimum of one set of printed photos along with digital copies. So I, I wanted to not put too much of a burden on the, um, applicant, since printing photos, or color photos is a little more of a asking a little, yeah, so I figure if they provide one set, we can pass it around in the meeting, and then if they also provide digital ones, we can, I look at them ourselves.
Or if we also feel, or we know the properties, and we've looked at it ourselves, and, and we feel might, something might be missing or be helpful. It also alerts them that we may be asking for photos, and maybe ask for one or two few more photos from different angles or something, but I guess, no, and this is what we look for.
I appreciate the posting online comment also.
Yeah, it lets them give us more photos and higher resolution and not have to worry about mailing.
Now, did, were there checkboxes here in the past?
You.
Check boxes?
Yes, the, the last draft had checkboxes.
Okay, because that's helpful for people to know whether they've really satisfied. You know, every step that helps the applicant understand they've gotten to where they need to be is just makes it hopeful.
Oh, and I did add, at, at the top in the instructions on this page, to, um, please submit a, a digital PDF copy of the application, if you can.
If you can.
So, um, Aaron, that should prompt them to do that.
And then we can easily post it on the website.
Can I ask you, that wouldn't necessarily be, be done in lieu of paper copies, just out of curiosity.
Exactly, yeah, because I say, please also submit, I, I mean, I hope that's clear, but, um, if you see whether you, you guys think it's clear, it's, so it says, the following materials must accompany the form, please also submit a digital PDF copy. And so, and the list.
What number is that?
That's the italic text at the top.
Okay, yes, I see, no, thank you.
And then, and then below it says things like six copies of a property survey, six copies of a site plan.
Got it, bro, it's all good.
Then we get into the application itself. Starts with a citation of the building code chapter, particularly the, the table of dimensional requirements, to let them know where they can find that. We're asking for their phone number and email address, that was not on the previous version, that was always a big headache. A glaring omission.
Yeah, for you trying to follow up, and trying to.
Yeah, wouldn't always be there.
Just like you asked, who receiving the application, make sure, make sure that everything is there right at the outset, so you're not having to personally run around.
I do generally, um, I go over it with a fine-toothed comb, when it comes, it initially comes to me, and I look through it, and that's, that's what I put on the list here of steps. Is the first step is, the chair reviews it for, for just general completeness.
Okay.
Um, I'm just, like, in, in kind of gross terms, like every doc, is every document here, is, is the survey here, is the deed here?
How, how far in advance do you get these, uh, before you have to?
Um, well, I I, well, the real question is, after I get it, how much time goes by before I schedule all, usually I have to immediately, I receive it, I look at it within a day or two, and get back to the applicant if something's missing, and also to set up a workshop.
Okay, and the reason why I'm asking is that, you know, you're doing all these things, and if you ever feel like you need to, you know, pass things off a little bit to take some burden off, um, just let us know.
Yeah, it's not that big of.
Okay, good.
That, that type of thing is not, not such a big deal. Rest of the application form is, is the same. Pretty, this pretty much the same as the last version, the, the existing. Then we have a zoning conformance worksheet, which you saw before as well. Same thing, we talked about just having them fill out this, this chart. I guess in time, once this gets put into action, um, we'll see how well it works, and we may want to tweak it.
Yeah, well, I think.
We could test it out, we could find willing subjects, guinea pigs.
Well, the applicant's gonna have to do it, that's all.
You know, but just to, you know, just to hand it to somebody we know, or, you know, and say, here, I don't know.
Pretend you want to put up a six-foot fence.
Right.
It doesn't, could you make any sense of this?
Yeah.
Right, the other thing is, uh, who would help you flush this out that they answered accurately?
Well, see, I don't get into it, when it first comes to me as a chair.
We'll do that at the workshop.
What the workshop for?
Perfect.
And I don't try to preempt.
I, I'm trying to save you time, is the point.
Yeah, well, also not my, I, I don't have the power to preempt the board, it's a board decision as a whole, about whether the application is a hundred percent complete. I just, like I said, only in gross terms, I make sure every document that's supposed to be there is there, and then I leave it up to the board members to, to go through them.
Yeah.
Item by item and say, is this sufficient, is this precise, is it clear enough?
That, that's what I think is important, that you're, you're perusing this independently in the beginning, but I think when it comes to a workshop, uh, you can then flag some concerns that you may have seen when you looked at it, so that the board members look at it right away, and help you digest that. So, um, just going back for one second on, uh, the application, paragraph seven. For item seven, reason for the appeal complete, only the part that relates, you know, to type of appeal checked above. Use extra sheets, interpretation of the zoning law or map is requested, the reason the interpretation is sought. I'm just trying to think, um, how does a person answer that?
Well, um, uh, if they read the pamphlet that we recommend to them in the beginning, they'll learn that there are two types of appeals, interpretation and variance. And an interpretation is where they believe that the, um, CEO, the code of personal officer has, has misapplied both the zone code, or misunderstood it, or made an incorrect application. Um, somebody who believes that their building permit was rejected because of a misreading of the law.
Okay, great.
They come to us requesting an interpretation, like, you know, the inspector says, this provision does not let me do what I want, but I believe that's, that's wrong, it really does permit that, and I, I want you as ZBA.
I totally understand that now, is there, like, you can put in paren, the reason interpretation is sought, you put it in parentheses. Uh, going back to the reference where it mentions that if you think that the, uh, building code inspector was inaccurate, or is it correct, is there, where is that stated exactly?
That's, how about in doing that in step number five, that's where we ask, that's, that's where the applicant first says,
Okay.
I want an interpretation, or I want a variance, that, that would be a good place, I think you're right about that. To put in like, uh, a, a one cent, after each of these options, a one cent less, like little explanation, what was an interpretation?
Yeah, like, for, because it's just, to me, it's, looking at it, maybe I jumped too far, too fast, but if I'm, and some people might just spot review this, but if we put in parentheses, like, say, even where it says interpretations of, the reason for the interpretation is sought, put in parentheses, um, why the applicant believes that the building inspector, uh, you know, may have misconstrued the code provision in this case, or uh, how does the applicant see the code, uh, applying, you know, in comparison to how the building code inspector sees it? I mean, I just think it just makes it a little bit more, um, layman understood, like, oh, I see what you're meaning about interpretation.
Okay.
I'm just wondering if.
I'm thinking, though, we're sharing, thinking, well, do we need the completeness of that, or is that for the meeting, and how much do, if, if I'm filling this out, how much do I want to share, do I want the full story here, or do I want to convey it?
I think we want to see the full story, so we can read it and understand it, what they think, because otherwise, I think we're, we're not opening the can of worms early enough. And we're not getting them to think about what they have to come to us with, at, at the, at the workshop.
Yeah, if, if they're, if they're off on the wrong slide, like if they, if they've got the wrong notion.
I would have the wrong notion, I'd be like, what did, I, I'd be guessing a little bit, I, that's why I was trying to think, where is the C, or interpretation, the zoning map, or the various?
So, number five is where we first ask them to choose.
I see that.
Which of these two are you asking for, and that's where I think it'd be a good place to, to provide that kind of definition you're, you're talking about.
Yeah, and perhaps on both of them, like, like, for instance, the first one would be how, why, uh, their thinking differs from what the building inspector
Mm-hmm.
uh, has construed the code to mean. Uh, and the second one would be um, that, simply say, this question goes directly to the code provision, and why your property, the code provision that governs the variance of the side yard setback, or the front yard setback that's been, uh, identified by the building inspector, and why, um, you believe a, a variance, uh, would be appropriate, meaning, uh, 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 what do you call, a, um, an exception.
Right, exception, I think is the key word.
Yeah, an exception to the particular building code, and that's it, and, and it makes, I think it just makes it less vague for them, it, it's sort of, oh, I, I get what they're saying.
Yeah, okay.
So would it ever be that, um, because I'm wondering if you want to say, under five, an interpretation, blah, 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 or a variance, or would there be a time when people are asking for both?
There could be.
Okay.
They could be seeking two different things, they could be seeking, uh, you know, a, a use issue, or, um, you know, anything else, uh, there, there could be, it could be, the people have come to us with multiple code issues before, so it could easily be both, and I just think it just helps focus them sooner, you know, and rather than us telling them at the workshop, and they're like, okay, I hope and I think I got that right, because I gotta go to a hearing the next time around.
Yeah, that's, I, I like anything that
Gets them ready.
That translates the concepts into ordinary language, and rather than using terms of art, like variance.
But, but it's, it's good that you did it, so you did it, you showed us, you sort of showed them in a, uh, sort of a legal language, as to what we're targeting, but then you're defining it.
Right.
And so they're seeing it from two different angles.
Okay, that's good, I will put in those two definitions.
But other than that, I've just seen if anything else would trip me up if I was looking at this stuff for the first time, but I, I don't really, I haven't come across anything else.
And just to be clear, and I think this is where my, my point was coming from, is that, based on the input and the applicant, because back to the fact that you're not, you're reviewing personally prior to the meeting, that all of the materials are in place, not the worth of the content to answer those two questions that we're speaking.
Right, right, I'm not.
So it's, it's again assisting us, assisting the applicant.
It's understand what they're.
If it doesn't meet the merit, the merit's not there, it's not gonna disqualify the meeting from happening.
Right, uh, the, the decision on whether the argument has merit, is up to the board members, meeting together, in a formal meeting.
But this helps the applicant understand, uh, really what they're gonna be up against, and it's, I think it's, I think it's much better that they understand going into the workshop
Oh, yeah.
than leaving the workshop, and we've advised them, and they know the next out is just the hearing.
Yeah.
And, uh.
Right, yes, anything we can do to simplify, clarify.
And then they'll be able to fill these out digitally, like on there?
Um, no. Um, I don't have the software to create a fillable PDF form. As far as I know.
Out of curiosity, is there um, are there specific code provisions that we can put under each of these references, I know you have the code provision one thirty six, uh, order, uh, dash seventeen B?
Um, well, the, all these dimensions are really just in one place, and that's table six B. And that's cited above.
Right above, yeah.
Um, really, it's, there is no place else where these these, um, regulations are.
How about if we were to, I know, this is just an idea, put a, uh, a vertical box right here, and just put C, you know, table six B, like for each of these items, you know, sort of flagging it two ways, because, you know, you can, go ahead.
The heading of column B, though, has that, do you see?
Yeah, I see it.
Yeah.
So it's telling them to, to get, to get the minimum or maximum to start with, go to, go to six.
Okay, table six B of what?
Uh, well, just look up in, you know, item one of the instructions, it tells them.
Okay, alright, yeah, because I, I think that flagging it as many times, no, I, I get it, that, but I'm just playing devil's advocate. Just trying to flag it as many times, like, would it be bad to put down in paren under, uh, the column B, right beneath table B, uh, end of chapter, chapter one thirty four?
Personally, though, I think visually it starts to look more confusing versus the clarity from point one. So I, it, it, for me personally, it, it wouldn't provide additional assistance, I would think that the average.
Marianne, you have a reciting book.
I, I like the way it is.
Okay, because in the, in the, in the law, they're often even referring, the, the, judges always want to know where things are.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Well, we'll see, we'll, we'll keep track of how many people get confused on this point.
I, I want to have guinea pig, I, I testers.
See, sometimes people will look, will tend to look directly to a bigger, uh, box and a grid.
Sure, they skip the instructions.
They skip the instruction, they're like.
Creating instructions.
I, that, this like, just, let, let me just look at this box.
It's, this is gonna, they're gonna see, that type of person who doesn't read instructions will, will see table in heading, will see table six B. And they're not gonna know what that means, so they'll, that will force them to look up, which is not hard to find.
I think our demographic in Cold Spring happens to be instruction readers.
Do you think so?
I do, I, I do.
And, and this is a serious, they're not gonna be approaching this too flippantly, so I think.
But, but what, the point I'm also making is that it's sort of stated at the end, you know, of, of the first point of the instructions. The very end, a, a, after a statement and reference, I would perhaps I would say, um, find the roads corresponding to your property zoning district in table B, at the end of chapter one thirty four, the zoning code. And then, and then put open parentheses, open quotes, table of dimensional requirements.
Okay.
Because it, what, it, it's sort of talking about them the smaller part of one thirty four B, where I think the reference should be made earlier to chapter one thirty four.
Okay.
In the zoning book.
Sounds better, so.
So I would say, find the roads corresponding to your property zoning district in table six B, located at the end of chapter one thirty four of the Cold Spring zoning law. And then put, uh, put open quotes, I mean, open paren, entitled comma table of dimensional requirements.
Right, okay.
Close quotes, close parentheses, period. I just think putting it all the way at the end sort of separates it out, it just, you're not linking the two, and now you're definitively stating you find table six B at the end of chapter one thirty four.
Got it, okay.
And then, and then you're also then, o, opening quote, uh, opening paren, and opening quotes, uh, uh, And then, and then you're also then o- opening quote, uh, opening paren and opening quotes, uh, uh, opening paren and then saying entitled comma. And so you're making very spoon feeding them as to where this can be found in, in sort of a, a progress, uh, uh, you know, sort of, again, a chronological way. But rather than saying it and it's sort of floating there like six B, and then you're looking at all the way at the end, it says chapter one thirty four. Trust, we get, there are people we write for that want to know exactly what you're saying right up front, instead of like having to wheel back as to where things were said.
Yeah.
But otherwise, everything else reads great.
Well, Mary Ann, you're welcome to, um, enlist, you want to help out, so.
Yeah.
It's just, um, you have a friend that you want to submit this to and just.
Yeah, we just try it out.
Has no knowledge of the ZBA, just.
That's a good point, though. You know, it's sort of just say, just, just as a joke, just look on your property and pretend you were gonna do something different with your property and then try to prepare an application that way and, 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 and ask the person what they think.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then report to us at the next meeting what, what, if there were any roadblocks or.
Okay.
Or stumbling areas that they, they said, I just wasn't clear.
Clear on this or that, yeah, okay.
It looks, it looks good.
It, it's never been better.
Yeah, oh.
Thanks, it's.
It's never been better. And thank you, Eric. I mean, I mean, it, what really helps get people focused is right in the beginning, right?
Voiceover, yeah.
Yeah.
And then everything is just a smaller, um, facet of what's stated above.
Honestly, a nice onboarding resource for a new ZBA member.
Right, right, yes.
True. I just wish we could, um, find somebody with that software to make a fillable PDF.
Yeah, maybe, maybe I can, um.
I don't, I don't know.
I don't suppose the village has that, um, PDF creation software that lets you.
I'm not sure, but let me talk to Jeff, we talked to Jeff, cause he may have some suggestions about that.
Do we use Adobe or Google or Google?
Um, I mean, there may, maybe something online that I could get access to. I may have something on my computer.
You can, I mean, I said, but. No.
I think you're right, it does require software and it's just, do we have a license of the village? What, what? What do we use?
In Word, but I don't know if it was a particular segment of.
Yeah, like I say, maybe I do, that type of thing, maybe that I just never noticed, but.
Well, I think the license would be like if the village was paying for the use of Google and the formatting and the applicant had the ability and also was using their license, cause you know, they pay for whatever they get. And then sending it over to the village, so you have licenses at both ends.
Well, I think Mary Ann is thinking of the, the type of PDF that's, you don't need any, you just need Adobe Reader, the, the, the bare bones, minimum free reader or, or other types of readers as well. And then these blanks that I have as lines here will show up on your screen as empty boxes you can type into them, they stays.
And you can't change the form, you know.
Yeah, you can't change the form itself.
But you can fill in the blanks, yeah. I know, I've done that in Word.
But it could be, you know.
But, thank you for doing all, I mean, there's a lot of work to say here, I mean, it's unbelievable.
No, it's really good. I think it'll really help people. Although people when, I, they are amazingly well-prepared when they come for the workshop and then hear feedback and then come even more prepared.
Yeah.
It really is good.
When they have architects and when they have, uh, attorneys with them, which we've had in the last few, but when they come in and they're like, I, I can't afford it, which is like a lot of people, but they do come in front of us and they need help.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we want this to be accessible to somebody without, you shouldn't have to pay anyone.
But that's my point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I've been around here long enough that we've seen the people who have not had the, you know, we don't, or financially they put their money elsewhere and they want to just give it a shot the way they can do it easily, so this is going to help spoon feed things more.
Mm-hmm.
Really good, yeah.
But why, everything has looked so good in front of us recently, they've had architects and attorneys. Or the last fellow, what, right, uh, was, uh.
He had an architect, but the architect didn't come.
They did not come, see, but he was good enough, he was a banker.
Right.
So he knew how to fill in the, the boxes.
And read regulations, and read things, yeah.
Okay, uh, that was the last item on the agenda. Any other business?
Were we gonna talk about, um, members? I don't know if we do now.
We could, yeah.
And also, uh, were we gonna talk about changing the evening of the meeting?
That, um, was, that's, that idea was in connection to this, um, member who, or this village resident that, um, would be great, has expressed interest. I interviewed her, she has tremendous professional background, relevant. Uh, but she's not available Thursday nights.
Let's change it to the, I'll tell you what, me personally speaking.
Well, she's not available Tuesdays either.
Oh, heck.
But the village can't, we can't use this room on Mondays or Wednesdays, so it really, I mean, it's very tight. So that person may not work out for this. She may, uh, uh, the mayor may use her for some other position. But, um, yeah, if you have other, yes, we are looking, we do have a seat that is unspoken for. So, um, now or later, um, John mentioned one potential person that we'll keep in mind. Uh, so if you hear of anybody else who's interested.
But the reason why we can't do Tuesdays again is.
Um, this person, this applicant is not available.
I wouldn't, if, sorry, say we get somebody else who's willing to do Tuesdays and if Tuesday worked for you, I think it's better than tail ending on a Thursday where it affects weekends or events that are scheduled either in my, my work or whatever, tends to be towards the end of the week, which was like tonight.
Likewise, I don't want to use that to encourage it, it's not advantageous to others, but yeah, I, um, I find myself frequently moving what happens to be Thursday evening, board, uh, uh.
It's difficult.
Professional board meetings with organizations where I'm typically tied in the city, in the office, so, you know, I had a proxy for what I needed in the city.
So would Tuesdays be better? Like.
They would, for me, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the reason why I would like that is because I also do, on the third Tuesdays, I have my other meetings. And for me to know that Tuesdays is my designated day instead, is today the third Tuesday or is today the third Thursday or is today? And I'm like, you know, it's hard enough just doing all these things. If it was, if I knew Tuesday was the day of the month, I had, it was a throwout, meaning I had to be here at different places, that would be easier for them.
I was also wondering is, because, you know, I always block out the, the two, two meetings we and we don't really have that much business. Could we just plan maybe on one?
I asked the mayor about that and she said she would prefer to, um, keep it twice a month officially, on paper.
Okay.
And then just cancel.
Paid thirty dollars an hour.
Because.
No, it's fine.
Um, it does let us give a quicker response to something when an application drops.
Yeah. Yeah, that makes, that makes total sense that, yeah. And I have at least scheduling issues of anybody probably at this table, so I.
I can, I should really try to cancel sooner when there's nothing, I, I mean, I've been waiting till like Tuesday, the, the two days before and I could do it soon.
You're consistent, so that really helps us. It's not as though it's.
I'll try to consistently be earlier.
No, no, it, it's helpful and I understand the point of in the case where I had a flight interruption and I was the third.
And you were the third, right, and, and I, but, but.
I was concerned for the applicant.
And I missed our holiday party because we said that we were gonna have the meeting that night and I came and left the holiday. I didn't even get to the holiday party, it was a hearing, so I made sure I was doubly certain to be here and then it was canceled. And so, I mean, this really does impact life and, you know, I've skipped baseball games, you know, basketball games, hockey games, everything for getting here. And there's a point where I'm just sort of like, you know, Tuesdays would probably be less impactful for me for all these outside events, because people don't tend to schedule, you know, I mean, if Tuesdays have worked for you, I, I, I tend to think it's a day that's just, you, you know, for the two different other organizations I'm with, everybody's like Tuesday. Because, you know, people have families and events and things to go to. I don't know, how do you feel about that, though?
Well, I don't. Yeah, I, I shared without getting into detail, it would be advantageous, but I don't want to structurally change something where you're putting all this work in, Eric. I don't want to put you in a position.
With me too.
Well, that's what I was getting from Eric, you know, so I was thinking, wow, I, I, cause I thought about it, remember I initially said, oh, the, uh, the third Tuesday would be great, cause you, you said Tuesdays, the first and third, and I said, oh, that's not Tuesday, it sounded great to me, cause I'm like, yeah, Tuesdays, and then I like, oh, wow, I have my other meeting on Tuesday, you know?
So second and fourth is just as valid or just as.
That would work perfect, cause.
I will, I'll tell the mayor that the board prefers making that switch anyway, regardless of whether, what any this question of this applicant, we prefer the swit- to switch. And, um.
I'm not gonna lie, the, the radar went off in my, my chief people officer brain of, wait, I know we've got to do right by getting talent, local community, and I went, are we structurally changing something as if I was looking at a senior position and are we making the role for the person or are we making the change for the rest of us?
Well, that's why I was saying, I think as a board, we, we decide on it.
Board deciding.
Mm-hmm, that's a good point.
And the other thing is, uh, I think I get the other person on board on a Tuesday night easier, knowing this guy than, than a, uh, 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 on a towards the weekend type situation.
I have, I have a feeling in general, most people would be.
Right, and it doesn't mean that we couldn't move it back if we really felt like we had to. It, it, you know, it's not written in stone, and, but I think it would work a lot better and it's still just covering the requirements, right?
I mean, there you have created sweeping change within like the first two weeks, right?
Yeah, and that, and now going out.
Thirty to seven.
Yeah.
Yep.
Which made me be like, looking at my watch.
You, is it a seven, a lot harder?
No, it's an adorable day, though.
It will Tuesday, I, 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 see, I would, it'd be easier to plan, like, I couldn't, like, we had, we had an event tonight.
Yeah.
And, and it, it's just, you couldn't do them both and I tried and so.
Yes, sorry.
But I, 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 I think similar to you, I have more complications with a Thursday.
Well, you do a lot of traveling.
Travel, yeah.
You, you go travel and travel.
Which was the hang up and getting home for that meeting.
Yeah, no, it happened, you know, it happens, that's the point and.
Yeah.
Um, that's why, that's why I really think that we should, should definitely push at trying to get more people. And it doesn't, I think it does not matter whatsoever if we have, you know, it, alternates would love to be there and board members, I know, cause we went through and had alternates in the past when I first started. And it just made it so easy for the chairman, just to know that they had a full board and not have to sweat it. I mean, with everything else the chairman had to do, you know, like, do, do we have a full board here or people responding to me?
Well, three people are a quorum, right? So as long as you can get three.
No, you, but you want five. Isn't, is that not true?
Uh, the more minds, the better.
Right, so, w- w- see, what, what, what's happening for what we have right now, we're on a razor thin margin. Of like, if two people are like, that doesn't work for me, that day doesn't work. And then, so what happens is for the applicant, it gets pushed off.
Oh, yeah, that's.
And, and.
That's very, yeah.
And you don't want to see that happening. And besides, you also want to have people, what if things change, if somebody moves away, you want to have as many, you want to have as many ducks in a row to fill in, you know? Anyway, not gonna say anything more.
Sorry.
Thank, thank you.
No, that was good, Eric, thank you.
Yeah, make a motion adjourned.
And make a motion.
Exactly.
All in favor?
Um, aye. Thank you, Eric, that was, that was good. Good work, I appreciate it.